Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina. Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Motion to excuse up the member.
Thank you.
I'll favor.
Hi.
Hi.
The passage is their excuse?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our citizenship, our leadership, our customers, our workforce, and our business. May we always be mindful of their service and we confess that we are nothing without you and our trust in you completely. Amen.
All right, under proclamations, item two A, we're gonna call up Veronica Perez with Angels of Love.
We have them.
The Angels of Love Organization.
Oh, great. Hi.
Hello.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You can say hi. Yeah.
Oh, hi, my name is Veronica Perez. I'm the executive director for Angels of Love and I want to thank you for collaborating with us. It's an honor and I also want to thank your city. Our victim advocate has actually been presenting at all of your Boys and Girls Club. So well around the area as well, San Juan, and it's around your PSJ. To me, I see PSJ and I see it as it's all together. But no, thank you for letting us, I mean, it's very, it's a very important topic. Uh, you know, one out of three individuals will either experience it or know of someone that has been having trouble with it, you know, in a relationship. So it's very important that we do teach our young individuals about healthy relationships. But thank you so much for collaborating with us and having us here today with today's proclamation.
Yes, of course, welcome. I was just gonna tell you, you might want to tell the public who you guys are, because they know you by name as organization. But what exactly do you do for the public?
Oh, Angels of Love is a nonprofit organization. We provide services to victims of domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, and even trafficking. So I mean, sometime, one of the classes that we do have, it's an empowerment class where we try to get them back to, you know, functioning on their own, you know, relieving them with the trauma, giving them tools and guidance to be self-sufficient and to let them know that, you know, we're here by them, by their side and helping them with anything that they need help with. Uh, right now, we have also been focusing, like I said, on educating our youth. So it's very important, we do have a guy, a Kind Girls Program, Girl Power. We also have Distinguished Gentlemen that we just kicked off, actually, February 20th at your Marsha Elementary. Uh, and then we're scheduled already in for April at another elementary. And then, of course, we have our Expect Respect and that is the teenage program that we do teach as well. So we have several programs for our youth as well.
Is there any way you can elaborate in Spanish?
Perfect.
Si, pasale, así para que el público sepa quién es uno.
Si, nosotros somos una organización fuera de lucros para víctimas de violencia doméstica. Hacemos servicios para toda la comunidad, no nada más para víctimas, sino si tiene un familiar que también está pasando por esto, a veces es difícil como familiar ayudarlos, entonces también ayudamos a la familia. Tenemos muchos programas para los jóvenes también, para niños. Acabamos de hacer un programa para niños que se llama Caballeros. Verdad, entonces les queremos enseñar a los niños desde chiquitos de cómo tener modales, cómo tratar a los demás y cómo tener respeto hacia ellos mismos, verdad? Entonces uno de los programas principales que ofrecemos son para víctimas de violencia doméstica donde los ayudamos a primero, más que nada, a enseñar qué es la violencia doméstica, porque aunque hayan pasado por eso, a veces no se dan cuenta que pasaron por violencia. Entonces tenemos muchos servicios para toda la comunidad, hacemos presentaciones para adolescentes, verdad? Porque queremos enseñarles desde están jóvenes que esto es un ciclo que queremos cerrar.
Bienvenidos. All right.
Thank you very much for what you're doing and how you do it. It's really important for the community. Uh, the proclamation reads, whereas teen dating violence is a serious and preventable public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities. And whereas the City of FAR stands with Angels of Love and the Expect Respect Program in their mission to educate, empower, and to protect young people from dangers of unhealthy relationships. And whereas rising awareness about the warning signs of dating violence and promoting healthy relationships among teens is essential to breaking the cycle of abuse and fostering a future free of violence. Whereas through education, advocacy, and community engagement, we can provide teens with the knowledge and the support they need to make safe and respectful choices in their relationships. And whereas we recognize the importance of collaborative efforts among schools, parents, youth organizations, and community leaders to prevent dating violence and create a culture of respect and non-violence. Now therefore, I, Itza Flores, in representation of Ambrosio Hernández, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by virtue by, uh, by the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, someone come up here real quick? Oh, yeah.
Next, we have item two B, we're gonna call up Judge Jaime Muñoz for a proclamation proclaiming February 23rd as Serve Above Self Day and Painting of the Magic of Rotary Day.
Judge of love, huh?
Good afternoon.
Here comes the judge.
Mayor, Commissioners, Dr. Flores, Judge Rodriguez, thank you for having us here this afternoon. We are the Rotary Club of FAR. As you know, we're a community-based organization focused on community service and the youth. We've been in existence for 120 years, but specifically in the City of FAR for 70 years. We're a very active organization within the city and we're very proud to call ourselves the City of FAR Chapter. As you know, many of you, we do have every month, we do have the Rotary Students of the Month. And we recognize a senior female and male student from every high school every month who can then go on to say on their college applications and their resumes that they were the Rotary Student of the Month. Uh, we also, uh, host a Christmas party for the Casa Esperanza en Las Milpas. We host, we sponsor 30 families, we provide them with food to carry them through the Christmas holidays and we provide all the kids of the family with a gift, a special gift that they can call their gift for Christmas. Uh, we also host a special needs Christmas with PSJA. Now, you may not know this, but PSJ has a very large population of special needs students. And this year, it was over 3,000 students that were able to enjoy the Christmas party that we hosted for them with music, food, gifts, and a picture with Santa Claus that they were able to take home to their families. Aside from that, we also sponsor nine scholarships to a male and female student of every high school uh, every year totaling $15,000. We sponsor donations, $2,500 donations on behalf of the FAR Chapter Rotary. Not only to Tim's Coats, but to Boys and Girls Club of FAR and to the Hidalgo County Food Bank. So we try to be as active as we can and we try to represent our FAR Chapter as best as we can. On behalf of the, on behalf of our chapter, I want to thank the City of FAR for this recognition and this proclamation of 120 years in existence for the Rotary Club of FAR and 70 years for the FAR Chapter.
That's amazing, Judge. Before it, gracias. Can you, can you introduce your, your, your colleagues?
Yes, in fact, I'd like for everybody to step up and introduce themselves. My name is Jaime Muñoz. I'm a, a member, a serving member, a president member of our organization.
Wonderful, good.
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Jorge Flores. Uh, I've been with the chapter for 21 years and it's a very humbling experience to be part of such a wonderful group uh, and giving back to the FAR community.
Hi, my name is Roberto Diaz. I've been a Rotarian since 2008 with another Rotary Club from Robero and three years here at FAR Rotary Club. Thank you.
Brother Rodriguez, I've been active Rotarian for seven years.
Fred Garza, I've been a Rotarian here in FAR for 28 years.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir. Jose Pecano, I'm actually the newest member of the group and learning that we are a group of doers that are very active in the community.
I can see that, yes. Well, congratulations to your organization. It's amazing all the work you guys are doing. Takes a lot of your time outside of your family, so it's a, it is a sacrifice, but like you can tell, lo hacen por cariño, you guys do it. And I'm very, I'm very proud of it and I'm sure my commission as well. It takes a lot, a very special person to do that. And for you guys to be proactive, to be thinking about all the populations you're covering and especially needs population as well. And, uh, you know, in the different parts of FAR as, as outlined already by you guys. And it's truly amazing work that you do. You know, that's what we, we actually have that in common with you as a city commission. You know, we're always thinking of what we can do proactively rather than waiting for somebody else to do it. Right, case in point, like today, we're, uh, we should be talking about some water, right? And the reason we do that is because I, I don't want my residents, I don't want to be boiling water. I don't want to see some supply chain or something dismantle my infrastructure in the City of FAR, because it's yours, right? It's just like ours and you guys are proactive, we're proactive. We don't want to ever see that happen in the City of FAR and we're growing, so you need to expand the infrastructure. Everybody needs water, whether you're special needs, woman, female, student, doesn't matter, elderly, everybody needs it. And just like you guys do, you, you put yourself out there, but you do it for the right reason. And that's very endearing. I just want you to know that we recognize the sacrifice you guys do. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Mayor, and to commemorate our cooperation with the City of FAR, the FAR Rotary, uh, the Rotary Club of FAR, I'd like to invite Dr. Flores to maybe to one of our meetings so we can talk about what the Rotary of FAR can do to sponsor something for the City of FAR, maybe more benches for our parks, a town clock, something that could commemorate the cooperation between the City of FAR and the Rotary Club of FAR.
Great. Why are you so special? We don't get invited. Great.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners.
Has anybody else, any other comments?
I just want to say, uh, you know, thank you very much. I mean, I've been kind of active with you guys in different functions of my sister is very involved and, uh, I guess they're all afraid of her, but you know, she's the, she's the ringleader of all these guys and I've known all these guys for years and years, I mean, probably over 20 years or more, Jerry, probably even more. But, uh, thank you guys for what you all are doing here. It's really, really special what you do for the community here in, in the City of FAR and thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay, again, thank you guys for, um, I know my sons went through your roads, Rotary Student of the Month. It meant a big deal, helped with all their applications and it's just, you know, you're a, a great service and role models for the young, you know, men and women of, you know. And, uh, and I do know his sister, you know, keeps you in line, so. Anyway, uh, whereas Rotary International is celebrating 120 years of service as a worldwide service organization founded in February 23rd, 1905, with a membership of 1.4 million professionals and business leaders in 200 countries, organized into 46,000 clubs, grouped into 527 districts and 34 zones. And whereas the Rotary Club of FAR since 1956 has provided 69 years of service demonstrating the magic of Rotary in service, serving its local community and the world. And whereas the Rotary motto, Service Above Self, inspires members to human, provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas the Rotary International's vision, together we see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe, in our communities, and in ourselves. Is exemplified through Rotary Foundation, the public charity that transforms donations into life-changing, sustainable projects addressing critical global needs, including promoting peace, fighting disease, providing clean water and sanitation, saving mothers and children, supporting education, growing local economies, and protecting the environment. And whereas the Rotary District 5930, South Texas and its 50 clubs are investing in local community-based services projects this year, funded through the Rotary Foundation. And whereas the Rotary District 5930, South Texas and all its clubs are committed to promoting peace in our community, our schools, and within our families. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, uh, in representing Ambrosio Hernández, Mayor of the City of FAR, by virtue of the authority vested in me and behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim 23rd day of February 2025 as Serve Above Self Day and Painting the Magic of Rotary. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
All right, next, we're gonna call up our city engineer, Maria Ranquel, for a proclamation proclaiming February 16th through the 22nd as National Engineers Week.
Maria Ranquel, city engineer, for the record. Just want to say a couple of words, we'll keep it short, I'll keep it short. Yes, absolutely. Introduce them, yes.
Yes.
So, um.
Come to the front, either side. We want, we want the public to see you guys.
Yes. The total, there are a total of 12.
Just split, you know, right and left, pass it, pass it.
We can come up all the way to the front.
All the way. Jose.
There you go.
There you go, there you go. Bring him, bring him, bring him. Sin miedo. There you go, one, two, three. There he is. Okay, ahora sí.
Yes, so I just want to say I'm proud to present the city's engineering department. We are a team of 12 young professionals who embody the city's values. And this is the team behind the city's capital improvement projects. These are projects that expand our infrastructure and improve the quality of life of our residents. Um, I also want to thank you, Mayor, and our Commissioners for the recognition and for allowing us this opportunity uh, to take part in, in building a vibrant City of FAR and Rio Grande Valley. Um, so we have here, uh, young professionals, the future leaders, future engineers of our area, and they're doing a great job and I, I'm glad that they're being recognized for that.
Well, you're doing a great job. Do you want us to introduce one by one? Okay, one. Great.
Go for it, yo, I'm the engineering technician. Just four months in five days.
Nobody's counting, right?
Um, Nick Gonzalez, uh, I've been with the city for four years and I'm the country.
Great. Okay. Great. Came, came over, good side, huh? Todo te conoce nativo, hello bueno. Great team, you guys have a great team. All right. Commissioners.
Yes, so I'm an engineer by trade, but thank you for all you do, guys. I know you, it's a lot of hard work doing engineering, trying to brainstorm awe and turning off any fires. So here is, whereas engineers use their scientific skills and specialized knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers help solve major technological challenges of our time from designing efficient building systems to rebuilding towns that were saved by natural disasters. And whereas engineering has been called invisible or stealth profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way, yet we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. And whereas founded in 1951, National Engineers Week, E-WEEK, is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of and interest in engineering technology careers. And whereas E-WEEK promotes recognition among parents, teachers, and students on the importance of a technical education, a high level of math, science, and technology literacy, and motivates youth to pursue engineering careers in order to provide a diverse and rigorous engineering workforce. And whereas the American Society of Civil Engineers, ASCE, and the Texas Society of Professional Engineers, TSP, serves as a bridge between the academic world and the profession field, offering everything from educational resources to networking and licensure preparation, contributing significantly to the development of a better, safer, and more sustainable community. As the Rio Grande Valley Chapter of ASCE and TSP would like to acknowledge engineers across the City of FAR in honor of National Engineers Week of February 16th to the 22nd, 2025. Now therefore, I, Daniel Chavez, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernández, Mayor of the City of FAR, takes up the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of February 16th to the 22nd, 2025, as National Engineers Week.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
You know, um, we, you guys may not know this, but, uh, you know, she were, she sits in a big chair. A lot of pressure, Maria. And I think, uh, sort of my wife being, uh, who gets a lot of pressure from me, right? She gets a lot of heat and I want, I want the public to know because, uh, you know, you guys do everything. I mean, you do our roads, our drainage, you help with the bridge design, all our parks. I mean, you, you touch about everything in infrastructure that we desperately need, right? Because I don't know the first thing about it, but I know we need it. But without all of you as a team, we can never get FAR, we're never gonna get on FAR where we have thus far. And there's even more things coming, right? So with your help, right, we're, we are committed to modernizing our water department, right? We all, we need those big, whatever you guys call the big reservoirs to be sure that people don't drink, you know, lead contaminated or bacteria contaminated water. We want to be sure we have good pressure, we don't want rust, we don't need lead or pollution in our water. But without you guys, we don't, we don't know the first thing about it, but we do know we need it. And without your intelligence and your perseverance, we never would have gotten where we are today. So I want to thank you on behalf of the residents of FAR, because they're about to get something even better than, than what they've seen in over 50 years. So congratulations to you guys. You want to put your group up here, me, huh? So we can. And welcome.
All right, anybody for public testimony?
No, sir.
Any public hearings?
No, sir.
All right, under City Manager's Report, item 5A, Submission of Sales Tax Collection were 5.23% increase year to date and 22.87% increase compared to last year. Next, we will call up Udi with our City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Yuri Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications. Before we move on to our events of interest or what's approaching, if you have those packets with you, we have two quick recaps to showcase. So the first one's an event that was held February 14th on Valentine's Day. This was 25 couples that were married and said, I do, and we have that recap here. Just a short glimpse of how successful this event was. Actually, the, those couples, these 25 couples were entered into a raffle of the day that they got married and, um, they actually won a trip to South Padre Island, so, um, so yeah.
Very nice.
Um, and right after the weddings, um, that was the first night under the stars, Cupid's Edition for the year that was held at FAR One, and that's the traveling event that we're getting ready for this year.
Great.
Yes. Uh, the second event is under EMS. This is the EMS Burn Awareness in collaboration with DHR.
Today, uh, we're here with FAR EMS, 3000 North Cage. Uh, we're doing an event in conjunction with FAR EMS, Far Fire Department, DHR for the ABA, American Burn Association. And we're here giving out some information of what happens in the case of an, of an incident. Somebody gets burned, some type of emergency incident, spread the information of what to do and where to take them and how to follow those procedures.
Events like this are important, so that way, uh, it helps us interact with the public. It helps educate the public and let them know what exactly we do as a fire department, not just putting out fires. We do a lot of public education, try and educate the public and let them know how to avoid accidents.
Oh, that's why I like to come, because to me it's like, I don't know about the resources that our community has, so I always like to come because I get information from them. And obviously, the most important thing is my kids and it's free and they enjoy it. And if you haven't come to a City of FAR event, you should come. It's very recommended, especially if you have little ones.
And I believe Danny, Danny Ramírez is here if there's any questions, um, particular questions on this event in collaboration with DHR.
I'm glad you're doing it, first of all, you need to bring attention to it. Uh, for instance, I, my wife won't let me cook, I can't barbecue, because I was burning everything around me. So I, I'm glad that we have people that are educating us on how to put those things out, how to prevent them as well. Whether it's a kitchen fire or something outside, right? It makes a big difference, because, uh, it's so easy to make a mistake and make things worse. So I'm glad that you guys are out and about in the city, it makes a big difference. And, and people really like it, they like interacting with you guys and all the first responders as well. So congratulations.
Okay, moving on to the next item, we have our St. Patrick's Annual 5K happening this Saturday. We have a short promo and some information to follow after the video. We have a short promo and some information to follow after the video. So registration is still open for the 5K happening this Saturday. People can register before Friday. Uh, last year we had 2,000 people that showed up. Uh, no one will get turned away if you show up, uh, Saturday morning. Uh, but we really encourage you to register, so you can get your bib, your number, your t-shirt. And packet distribution begins this Thursday from 8:00 to 7:00. Packet distribution is happening Thursday and Friday at Pepe Salinas. And yeah, we really encourage you to come out. It's a very friendly walk. Uh, not everybody does the jogging or the running. You know, we see people of all ages participate in this 5K. And then afterwards, obviously, it's a tradition, the, the green beer that people stick around for. So, uh, we're really looking forward to seeing everybody join us in the 5K.
Great.
Okay, the next event, this is actually happening at 6:00 today. This is a Stop the Bleed campaign. This is spearheaded under EMS. And, uh, this time we're having the CPR classes and the Stop the Bleed, which is classes on how to use a tourniquet, um, and other great, uh, resources I'll be showcasing today. It starts at 6:00. We've been showcasing this flyer. We also put it out of media, media advisory, so we're hoping we have a good amount of people show up. This afternoon, it's happening at our EMS headquarters, once again from 6:00 to 8:00.
All right.
Our next event is under the, uh, Health Fair Texas, formerly known as It's Time Texas Community Challenge. We're still encouraging people to sign up, download the app, keep logging those points. Uh, the city of FAR is still taking the lead in the medium-sized market, so we're still winning. However, we still want to keep encouraging people to participate, uh, and be active. So this is one of the events happening under our police department, Bike with a Cop, happening February the 26th at 6:00 PM. The next event is Health Fair and Salsa Lesson. Once again, this is also under the Health Fair Texas Challenge. It's happening March 4th from 5:30 to 7:30 at our EMS headquarters. So once again, we encourage everyone to come out here. You don't have to be a FAR resident. Uh, it's just checkups. It's, uh, it's a health fair, obviously. We'll have, um, resources out there, and you can stick around for a salsa lesson. So if you don't know how to dance salsa, this is, uh, you know, maybe a calling you might have. It's, it's your time to shine. At our EMS headquarters. And our last flyer is Batch the Youth. The applications, uh, were open already about two weeks ago. We're still taking applications. Actually, the registration ends March the 3rd, so you still have time, and the classes kick off March the 5th. It is a 10-week course, and once again, these classes are every Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00, and those ages are 13 through 17. Uh, these classes have been very, very successful. We have Chief here, Chief Gonzalez, if he wants to elaborate on this program. Uh, but once again, we're calling on parents that want, you know, to bring their children to participate. This is for both, uh, boys and girls. And once again, registration ends March the 3rd. This concludes, um, events of interest.
All right. I think we have one more event, don't we? The city manager's birthday today?
Well, there you go.
Of the major event. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dr. J.
Appreciate you guys, thank you. All right, under item 6, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Would you approve second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, one of us, mention for the record.
Sure. Okay, so in accordance with section 551.071 to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:25. We'll be back.
Yep. Item 78, Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance, Canceling the General Municipal Election for May 3rd, 2025.
Oh, yeah. Motion to approve the cancellation.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Congratulations. All right, 7B.
Thank you, guys.
Consideration in Action of Any Unordnance, Approving the Extension of the Boundaries of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, Terms Number Two.
Okay.
Would you approve second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 7C, Consideration in Action of Any Unresolution in Support of Meadow Heights LP to Submit an Application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for 2025 Competitive 9% Housing Tax Credits for Meadow Heights Apartments.
Would you approve second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 7D, Consideration in Action of Any Unresolution, Appointing One Alternate Member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommends Robert Carrio Jr.
Would you approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 8A, Consideration in Action of Any on the Adoption of the Water and Wastewater Rate Study Completed for the City of FAR by Capex Consulting Group.
As discussed in the second session?
Approve, discuss.
Second, second session.
Correct. We have a second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 8B, Consideration in Action of Any on the Proposed Toll Fee Increase for Salvaged Vehicles at the FAR International Bridge.
Okay.
Would you approve second?
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 9A, Consideration in Action of Any on Ratifying the Emergency Purchase of Replacement Equipment and Installation for the Wastewater Treatment Plant from Lewis Electric Motors from Harlingen, Texas, the amount of 147,353,72.
Would you approve second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 10A, Consideration in Action of Any on Acceptance of the PSJA Tri-City Pedestrian Safety Improvements. Phase One is complete.
Nice.
Second.
The sidewalks? Finally, thank God. Great job. Okay.
Fine.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 10B, Consideration in Action of Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter into a Service Agreement with the LifeScan Wellness Center from Tampa, Florida, to provide annual medical physicals for the fire department.
Okay.
Move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 10C, Consideration in Action of Any on Deduct Change Order, Number One, and the Addition of 30 Calendar Days to the FAR Reynosa International Bridge Expansion.
Would you approve second?
Why are we adding 30 days, Maria?
It's for the international span. It was an alternate on the bid, uh, and it was in, it should have been awarded when we awarded the base bid for the contract, but that didn't happen. So, uh, we're kind of.
Why can't she ever say it in English?
We're writing them now, but the date, uh, for completion is still, uh, this year, December 20.
Is this something that we forgot, or something that they, somebody, or said something new?
No, no, it, it was always part of the contract. It just, for some reason, it wasn't included, the 30 days, yeah. But we're still in December 2026, 2025.
It will not delay us. Perfect. All right. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 10D, Consideration in Action of Any on Amendment Number Two to the Professional Engineering Service Agreement with GDJ Engineering for the Veterans Road Hike and Bike Expansion Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Item 10E, Consideration in Action of Any on Agreement with the Hidalgo County Irrigation District, Number Two, for an aerial permit for the FAR Reynosa International Bridge.
Would you approve second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes.
Would you adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, it passes. We adjourn at the time being 5:22. Great, thank you.